Jana?
Mom?
You were good to go.
All right. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the March 28, 2024, meeting of the Public Dispositing Commission in Olympia today. Next month, we'll be meeting in Vancouver, Washington, for a road trip. We have all five of the commissioners appearing today, some in various forms on phone and by shooter. So I'm Nancy Isserlis.
I'm Alan Hayward, the vice chair.
Fred Jarrett.
Jay Leach.
Jay Leach, someplace warm, and Commissioner North. May not have him, but Jana, can you tell?
I'm looking right now. Let me get him a call.
Okay. Carry on, and if he jumps back in, we'll make sure that we know that he's there. We have a soon-to-be new commissioner who will be formally anointed on April 1, I believe. If there's anything wrong with that day. Jim Oswald will be joining us, and Fred Jarrett, this is your last meeting. I wish we had, like, ex officio counsel or something. I was talking to my friend on the gambling, she chairs the gambling commission, and she said they have that. They have an ex officio group of folks who don't have voting rights, attend their meetings, and are sort of, like, of counsel.
He still has his phone number.
I'm gonna change it.
This is Fred's last meeting, and I just want to say that he conned me into coming on to this. He and Ann Levinson took me out to lunch and said, "You'll have so much fun. It'll be a lot. It'll just be the best thing you ever did."
And we were right, right?
Yeah. Well, still have five more, six more months, so let's see. All right. Commissioner North, are you with us?
If you are, our six to unmute on your phone.
Hello?
Hi there.
Hi.
We were just going around the room introducing everyone and giving our fond aloha to Fred Jarrett for his last meeting.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I wish I was there to give my aloha to Fred in person, but anyway.
Anyway, we do know where you are when we have difficult or challenging issues. We may call upon you for ex officio advice.
Just don't call me for a four-hour BAP.
No. But as we move through some changes that we, I think we discussed at our strategic planning thing, I think your input would be very valuable. So enjoy your last meeting. All right. We are going to start with public comment. We have a number of people signed up, so I'm going to be a strict time master so that I make sure that we have lots of time for the needy agenda item that, out of our strategic planning meeting a couple of, or two weeks ago, I guess. So with the aim of targeting your comments to the three-minute mark, I'm going to start with Michelle.
Hello.
Good morning.
Good morning. Is it L? L. Michelle?
L. Michelle, that's you.
Yeah, first name's L, last name's Michelle, kind of confusing. I am the communications director at Puget Sound ESD 121. So very much appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this morning. I've been working in school communications since 2007, as the communication director at the Kennewick School District, also the Issaquah School District, now PSESD. And all to say that I have been around for a while, almost 20 years that I've been communications for school districts. As that relates to school finance elections, been very familiar with the PDC guidelines. But I've witnessed a lot of changes in the way that our communities receive information and consume information. So I'm just here to speak to the need to update the PDC guidelines specifically with regard to publications. And I think I saw that it's on your agenda today, so I'm happy that you are taking this matter on. I think you do have a letter in your materials from the Puget Sound ESD 121 that's signed by all of our school districts here in King and Pierce County outlining the challenges that we really are facing to inform our communities about our school levies and school bonds. But I'm not going to reiterate the information that's in the letter. You can read that. I just want to extend an invitation to the PDC to work with communications professionals to modernize the guidelines and to develop some training materials so that districts have a really clear understanding of what is acceptable and what is not acceptable. I know the Washington School Public Relations Association has reached out to the PDC, and they're available. I also wanted to give you a face and a name and a contact as someone you can reach out to to help work on providing some insight on what the challenges that we're facing in getting information out to the public. We completely understand and agree that there is a need to regulate activities and ensure unbiased, accurate information is getting out to our communities, and we want to work in good faith with the PDC that just reflects the way that information is shared in today's world. So my telephone number is 425-917-7681. You can also find me by email at L. Michelle, that's the letter L, M-I-C-H-E-L-L-E, at psesd.org. I'm happy to be a point person for you, and thanks so much for your time this morning.
Thank you for joining us, and thank you for your written comment. It was very informative, and it is included in our materials. Thank you.
Right. Thank you.
Connor Edwards, you're next. Mr. Edwards in the meeting. That's us. Mr. Edwards, you do have access. Try it again.
There we go. Thanks, Jana. And thank you, Chair Isserlis and members of the commission. I wanted to thank you all for your decision to take the agency in a more proactive direction with respect to the enforcement of C3 and C4 reporting deadlines. I recognize that this transition may take quite a bit of time and energy to fully sort out, but I'm grateful that you were all willing to take my concerns seriously. I recognize that many of you and perhaps all of you found my method of advocating for change to be irritating, but I would reiterate that this change absolutely would not have happened if not for the hundreds of complaints that I filed to highlight the scale of the current problem as well as the need for reform. At the strategic planning meeting, you all discussed taking a proactive stance for enforcement of C3 and C4 reporting deadlines, increasing the current penalties so that they were actually adequate to incentivize compliance, and examining whether or not warning letters were an effective deterrent for non-compliant filers. I think that you all reached the correct conclusions on each issue. The overarching question at this meeting is going to be, what are the concrete actions that you are going to take today to move the agency in a more positive direction? We are now seven months away from the 2024 general election. There must be concrete action today, not just talk. But I wanted to address something from the strategic planning meeting. At the meeting, Commissioner Hayward asked a question about the circumstances in which warning letters are used to dismiss complaints, and Director Lavala gave what I thought was a fairly evasive answer, so I wanted to try to answer the question more directly. I wanted to highlight this issue because I think this is where you're going to run into the greatest amount of resistance and evasion from staff. Here is the reality. Agency staff use warning letters to dismiss complaints when the staff's investigation determines that there was a violation that occurred, but staff determine that it would be more expedient to simply dismiss the case as opposed to taking it to a hearing before the commission. Because staff dislike having to do the work associated with taking cases to the commission, this is the most common outcome for cases where a violation occurred. There are no objective criteria that staff use to determine whether a warning letter dismissal is appropriate. And of course, once a complaint has been dismissed with a warning letter, it's res judicata, and the commission has no ability to weigh in or change the outcome. To state the obvious, no one likes fines, and it would be far better if everyone just complied with the law and filed reports on time. However, the reality is that when the other methods fail, like reminders and compliance training, monetary penalties are pretty much the only tool that the agency has to incentivize filers to follow the law. If hardly anyone ever gets fined when they fail to file reports on time, why should filers bother to spend time, money, or energy to comply with the deadlines? Why spend money on a treasurer? Why take the time to understand what the law requires and comply if there are no consequences for non-compliance? These are some of the questions that I hope that you all spend time addressing today. Lastly, during the last meeting, Chair Isserlis asked for analysis of how many people on the website view different types of data like C3s, C4s, F1s, et cetera, trying to get a sense of where the agency should be prioritizing limited enforcement resources. This is a great idea. I think if you could look at the data, I think that you would find that the vast majority of people are looking at C3s and C4s, and that hardly anyone looks at F1s or the other stuff. And yet, the agency has had this hyper fixation on F1 enforcement ever since I've been paying attention, and I think that the data would likely show that focusing so narrowly on F1s has largely been a misuse or misprioritization of the agency's limited resources. Just something to consider. And lastly, I just want to say goodbye to Commissioner Jarrett. I'm really going to miss listening to you at these meetings, and I wish you the best. Thank you.
Thank you, Connor. We have Joe Klinsler.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Sure can.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. This is Joe Klinsler. I'm dealing with some issues at work, so I'm using my iPad today. I appreciate the commission giving me a chance to testify to you. I am somewhat concerned that there may not be public comment on your strategic planning process. And because when I applied for rulemaking to, last year, to kind of clarify RCW and RCW about public, about use of public facilities and public comment, I was told wait for a strategic planning process, and it seems like that time is now. I want to stress to the commission that when I file complaints, it's because I've already made outreach to the person at the other end and asked them to change their ways, and they haven't. And I normally point to complaints. With a few exceptions, one exception being that Cedar Willie lady who had her signs to get in the label what party they were. And this has been an ongoing problem over the years of continued non-compliance with one individual named Alex Zimmerin who hasn't paid over $37,000 in fines. I understand he's a renter. So I guess if I've heard correctly, and I hope I'm wrong about this, I hope I'm wrong, because I re-listened to the audio last night and got halfway through it. You're not terribly excited about making new rules that are going to the legislature? So basically, the message is, if you're a renter, is you can continue to cheat and steal from the state public disclosure system? I don't think that's right. I think that we need to have a conversation that if you do not pay your fines, you do not get on the ballot. If you do not pay your fines, you may face other consequences. If you do not file your paperwork, you will get fined. We need to be fair to those that diligently file the paperwork, share their most personal of information, like where they live, what they own, what, you know, all that stuff. We're not going to have a campaign transparency system in the future, and I think we need to have one in the future. So with the enforcement rate being around 55%, I hope there's a discussion about some serious changes, and I hope Mr. Edwards' input is helpful. I would also add, as to public comment and being used for campaigning, I think we all, whether we're commentators like myself or presiding officers, need to know where the line is. Is quoting the president a violation? Is allowing someone to quote the president who's on the ballot every four years, is that a violation? Is using the slogan of a candidate, as Alex Zimmerin has done again recently, is that enough to warrant a complaint? Here's another scenario. When someone goes to a third party, say, an intercity council, and relitigates the election, is that a violation? We need to know where the line is on this law because that's what's best for everyone. We don't want the system filled up with complaints over yellow flags. We want red flags and convictions. I want to conclude on this spot. If you do open up your strategic planning to public commenting, you could certainly expect a well-researched paper by me within 30 days of that comment period. I want to thank you for your public service, and especially want to congratulate Fred Jarrett on his years of service to this commission. He will be missed, and I hope you listen to our continued public input. Thank you for your public service.
Joe, Robert Parker, you're up next. Morning.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
We can.
Good morning, commissioners. I come to speak to you today. I attended your retreat also, so I got to meet some of you, which I thought was a wonderful thing, so we can put faces to names and all that kind of good stuff. I come to talk to you about the dismissals rather than actually bringing people into compliance. My particular frustration is with the Byrd campaign, running for governor, that was fined in 2021 for an F1 violation, has had four warnings issued here more recently. If we're not going to actually hold them in compliance and not just be a paper tiger, maybe we should change some titles to dismissal officer rather than compliant officer. And I say that because I'm now the subject of his podcast, because the letter, the bottom of the dismissal letter that you give him with a warning up at the top and then says dismissed down below with no further action, is turned into, by, to the candidates as they dismissed it all, and it's not, we didn't do anything, which is not the case. And if we're going to just create a great big paper tiger, maybe we need AI, and we just don't need people to look at these things anymore. But to me, compliance means that if you do the same thing over and over and over, that eventually the staff gives you a taste that you actually fined somebody. But to have, the latest one on the Byrd campaign had 91 allegations. How many hours did it take you guys to actually process that, for you to give them a warning letter? How long did it take the person who actually was trying to get them to become compliant to actually write that up? How long did it take me to fill out the two complaints that I just recently filed against the same campaign? You're not being effective by just throwing these mass dismissals out there, and that's basically what they are. Even if you say warning at the top, you say dismissed at the bottom. We're not going to spend the time investigating. Why write it all up then? Just have the computer say dismissed. Okay, noted, dismissed, because we're not getting into compliance. I have another PDC complaint for the same candidate that I will be putting in, because he's doing the same thing that you guys just dismissed. So we basically have created this great big paper tiger that does nothing except hold, basically, the people that put the complaints in into a weird position. We can't get compliance, because you guys are dismissing faster than we can actually try and get them into compliance. Then when we get into these mass processing, like Connor Edwards' thing, I would bring attention John Claussen's case that I filed months ago. So you've issued a warning letter out there to Mr. Claussen based on that great big mass processing you did. I'd kind of like to know what you did with my complaint that's filed under the same number. You didn't address it in the letter. You just threw it aside. It's out there in ghost territory. Mike, and that guy ran a mailer. He put nothing on his PDC. There is nothing which takes his funds out of compliance, and you've done nothing. You went after Connor's mass dismissals, threw mine in with Connor's, but you didn't even address it in the letter. So it's basically up there on the PDC website, hanging as, I don't know, some year, maybe if you get around to it, if you come back around and actually find it, because you effectively buried it and haven't even contacted the candidate, and the election's long since over. That was when the last election ended that that came out.
Mr. Parker, you're, Mr. Parker, you're over time. Can you wrap it up?
I thank you for your time, commissioners. I appreciate what you do, and I'm hoping that you will take the stance to finally start holding people in compliance, finding and not just giving a paper trail to dismiss. Thank you.
Thank you. Glenn Morgan. Morning.
Morning. I always prefer to be here in person if I can. So I want to first, so I'm Glenn Morgan. I live in South Thurston County. I filed a lot of PDC complaints over the years. And I do want to apologize to this commission. One of the things I had mentioned last time I was here at the public comment is I was going to put together a study, and I'm actually in the process still of doing that, of analyzing some of the warning letters versus fines that have been issued over the last, say, four years or so, which is, which, even if I just look at the cases I filed, that gives us a subset sampling of about 200 or 300. So it's a decent number to look at. But I do want to just initially start out with mentioning, over the years, I filed about 810 complaints, give or take. About 300 of them, some of them are combined complaints together, but roughly about 300 of them have resulted in official sanctions of some kind, either a fine or a warning letter over the years. The PDC has agreed with my assessment that there was a violation. Inevitably, I end up running into people who I filed complaints against. In fact, I've had conversations over the years, at least two dozen legislators that I had filed complaints on at one point in time over the years. Well, they were usually annoyed with me in the beginning when they had it. By the time I usually run around and just ran into them at events, they, that time has passed, and I've been repeatedly thanked by every legislator that I've ever run into, I ever filed a complaint on, because they said, "The result of that work with the Public Disclosure Commission and the complaint that initiated the investigation, it forced them to reevaluate their campaign finance process, and it made them more compliant with the law moving forward." And I feel the same way. When I was deservedly fined in 2012, when I failed to file my own F1, one time, when I was on the school board, it helped me become more compliant. And I think that if we look at this, fines have to be viewed for what they are. I don't, again, I've been on the record for over a decade now on not having excessive fines, but some level of fines help bring people in compliance. And even if they're initially annoyed, most of these people will realize that it was a good thing after the, at the end of the day. I have three basic quick things I just wanted to mention that have come across some of the studies that I've been looking at with large volume of, and just reviews. Number one, I'm concerned with an increasing trend of people accidentally losing all records before the five-year statutory requirement of keeping the records in hand. Recently, the Thurston County Democrats in the North Thurston School District cases are examples. There's been no penalty for them to just lose all records and just make them disappear, which then that's their excuse for failure to go back and comply or document what happened. I think that's a bad trend because we're rewarding bad behavior and creating an out for people who just simply break the law and then simply disappear all the records, so there's no reason to comply with the law. The second issue is really more related to just the fine versus warning. It's less expensive just to break the law and ignore the Public Disclosure Commission than it is to comply. And I fear that's the little bit of the incentive structure that's created when you don't have any fines at all. And then, thirdly, I'm more concerned with something I'm not seeing too much recently, but one of the most recent complaints that I filed on a candidate running for governor, Cassandra Hanson case, that's recently been posted on the enforcement page, where there's just, if it's not an epic troll that somebody's just trying to mock the entire system, it's, I, it could be a, I don't know what it is, actually. It's $400,000 that suddenly appeared out of nowhere. Nobody documents it all, and they're running for governor, and it's a very high-profile case. We don't want cases like this to encourage just egregious and open violation at a pretty extreme level with no likelihood of any penalties, and especially when it's likely to generate a fairly high level of attention like that. And there's not even, even a pretense that it's filing, that's even compliant at all with the statute. So anyway, I do plan on getting back to the, to that report and analyzing some of the differences between the warning letters and other things. I've not been filing a lot of complaints. I think I've only filed a dozen or so in the last month, just because the volume looks like it's been pretty high here. I recognize staff has a lot on their plate, but I do want to encourage staff, when they're looking at these cases, to thoroughly investigate all the allegations. I was a little concerned with the Wade PAC dismissal recently. I know it was a $1,000 fine, but $50 fine was $950 dismissal. There were allegations in there that I felt were fairly significant, particularly the Mystery Act Blue account that had disappeared, that no, there was no reporting at all what happened to that, even though the treasurer and documentation had referenced it. So I just want to encourage staff to thoroughly investigate that. With that, thank you so much for letting me be here today. It's always good to chat with you, and I look forward to seeing you next time. And I'm willing to answer any questions if the staff, I know that you don't usually do that, but if there's any questions you might have, I'm willing to answer that since I'm here.
Thank you. Well, stick around. Maybe they'll.
All right. Thank you so much.
Next, we have an action item for approval of our meeting minutes, February 22, 2024.
I would move approval.
Second?
Second, from Mexico. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I think I heard Doug, so that's five. Just.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Peter, budget.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm the director from New Valley Executive Director. We are rapidly closing in toward the end of the fiscal year, surprisingly quickly. And as you'll see from your materials, we significantly underspent over half a million dollars, which is largely about 80% of that is from the Attorney General's Office allocation that we're underspent. That's our most highly variable expense and also one of our largest. And I'd like to always warn that it can go up at any time, particularly when we have a large case volume like we do now. The way those are allocated is it's average over three years, and it's a rolling average, so we can expect, probably see the allocation come down if we continue to underspend on that. But it takes some time to catch up. Then we may find ourselves in situations where we pot up and then our expenses go up because there's another large case or two. So we'll keep an eye on that, but for now, it's a healthy cushion of ways to invest some of those funds as the fiscal year comes to an end. The other, probably the next largest piece, about 10% of that underspend is salary benefits. We've got some openings that we're recruiting for, a couple that we're re-recruiting for, so we hope to have those filled. But in the meantime, that gives us a little cushion as well. We have some modest overspend in a couple of areas, small tune of $1,000 or $2,000, and those are, they are all central services type. That's then, just the allocation wasn't 100% on point, and that will catch up over time. It will be readjusted. Well, we also did get out of the legislative session, allocation out of the Transparency Fund for the commission outreach programs, and that will cover things like the upcoming thing in Vancouver.
Glad that money's being put to good use.
Yes. It's part of the real watch.
I have one question. Is there anything we could do, is the underspend to contract for some IT services to push our technology a little faster?
The, we certainly have that on the table and are currently under discussion. The problem is, is I'm sure you know, under budgeting, that you need to have things delivered within the, fences within this one year. So that might be the challenging aspect there. If we were to contract for services, but it was a project that's delivered in July, we'd miss the vote on that, then we might be behind the eight ball in the next year's budget.
It's creative, that means creative writing of work statement and what gets going.
That's one way to do it.
We do have that bucket.
We do have that bucket of money out of the transparency account that we are actively spending and we do have contracts underway on that. So we're. I don't know what we're up to with Portland Web Works, but we spent considerable amount of money in improving the website. Now they're moving on to accessibility and. Usability for Orca.
Well, we'll talk about this later, but I mean, one of the things that came out of the. Project plan that you guys sent was stuff that we're not going to get done. And I guess my question is, is there a way to be able to break that up into smaller pieces of work? So that those pieces can be done by June 30th. And rolled over to another contract to finish them up in the next year. So we stay on, on target to getting some of the work that we really want to get done, done.
That is what we're doing with the Portland Web Works, for instance.
Okay.
Yeah, without belaboring the point, what we're doing with this usability and user experience work we're having them do. Is basically doing a pilot of their ability to work on our internal filer systems. To build that relationship about how their developers relate to ours. If that relationship works out well, then we're going to expand that to the greatest degree that we can and make more traction on some other things. And, and I don't want to bore everybody back in, but I can certainly tell you later, there's also some sort of interplay between what we spend out of general fund and what we spend out of the transparency fund. That helps us a little bit there too.
I'm just looking at resources that are available that are not going to be available in a couple of months.
Yeah.
How do we, how do we take, take advantage of those to get the work done that we want to get done?
Yeah. So we've got some creativity there too.
Yeah, we don't expect to end the year with a half a million.
In a, in a week and a half or so, I'll be able to give you a lot of good ideas.
I'll let you slide to four.
Well, it's a lot, it's a lot easier when you don't have to take responsibility.
But I, I, again, not to belabor, but James Ray's a good point that if within this fiscal year, we can do. Some work with outside consultants that establishes that relationship. So you're not starting.
Exactly.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Perfect.
Moving on to legislation and rulemaking.
Thank you. No, 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 no. I would not subject you to that, to my, my PowerPoint abilities. So on the legislative front, I won't, I won't belabor everything that happened. I think we had good discussions. Throughout, throughout session about what was going on, commissioners. As the commissioners know, our request legislation did not pass and I think we'll, we'll have to address where we go from, from here. Looking at that as well as some other issues that were raised in. This and last legislative session that may come back, but things that we need to evaluate. But for right now, our immediate need is focused on rulemaking and coming out of the legislative session and. One of the bills that passed is the yard sign sponsor identification. Bill which, which removes the exemption of yard signs from sponsor identification. Or for smaller signs and that's going to come into effect on June 5th. And so that is. Within the election season for many campaigns and there will already be signs that have been printed and. And posted around, around the community. And so we have to come up with. How we are going to implement that, that law when it comes into effect. The legislature, I believe, made a, made a clear statement that they want this to be effective. For this.
Even the signs that I have in my yard.
The signs that you have in your yard. And not that I've seen those signs, but yes. Yeah, the smaller ones, right. There's a standard size of about one foot or two feet by one and a half, but.
That fit in the age stakes.
Yeah. And, and so those presumptively would, would apply. We have rulemaking ability to exempt. Signs that we see fit, but given the legislation that came through, I think, and the intent is that. That, that sponsor ID should be applied on, on yard signs. And so we're going to have to. We've evaluated and think that probably should have an emergency rule that goes into effect. We'll have time to go through the whole process before. Before the beginning of June. And so we anticipate bringing a proposal to the commission for the. For the April meeting and that's something that I learned as a consideration. Hopefully within that time, we'll be able to do some outreach to some of the print shops. Some of the campaigns and, and getting input. One thing that we've already received questions from on this issue is from print shops who've already. Who've already filled orders or are currently filling orders and kind of looking ahead to say, what's the, what's the requirements?
Where they should be date stamped.
Well, no, I mean, it's, it's an interesting issue. What, one, one thing we're considering is. Kind of looking at a print date for, for these determines whether it's required or not. The downside of that or the limitation of that is once it's, once it's put in your yard. You're really not going to be able to. To distinguish when, when something was, was printed or not. So there, there's some issues to consider, but I, I think we can, if, if we have a, we have this on the agenda and can discuss it in, at the April meeting. That would give us plenty of time to revamp and be able to file a rule that would become effective at the. By the time that the law comes into effect. The other rulemaking that we have already initiated, but want to see if. There's, or we want to make sure that there's time to, to have a rule that comes into effect for this, like for this election cycle is our deep fakes. Law. That's one where we have open rulemaking on and. I think. This is one that is in the formal rulemaking process. So we have to work on the calendar with the. With the code revisers office and. If we want this to come into effect before we're frozen from having, making rules, which is at the end of June, so June 30th is the last day that. A rule that the commission puts, puts out can be effective for the, for that, that year's election cycle. And so we're thinking that the, the earliest we can have that hearing would be at the May meeting. And if the commission can adopt the rule at the May meeting, that'll give us just enough time to get it to go into effect. Before the June 30th deadline. So backing that up, I think at the April meeting, we can also have. Proposed rule that we can have, potentially we could have discussion about. Could have it out to the, to the public by then. The only thing about that one is we would have to have the proposed rule filed by, I think it's April 17th. So before the April meeting, we'd have to have a proposed rule. So what I'm going to suggest is we definitely work on, work on that proposal. Get it before the commissioners to, to review and if. If now, if you're comfortable with having us file that, that rule for, for public comment. We can have kind of an informal discussion at the April meeting and then we'd set the formal. Public comment hearing for the May meeting. I know I'm throwing a lot of dicks on the calendar here.
As long as you, as long as you, as long as you calculate all the relevant time periods.
The, the ask for today is if you're comfortable with us and of course we, we, we show you a draft of the proposed rule, but as long as you're comfortable with us. Filing that, that rule as the, as the proposal. Before the, before the April meeting. Then we'll have the April meeting to discuss it. We'll have the May meeting to have further discussions if there's any. Amendments that, that you're interested in seeing. And if, if things pull together, then you can adopt it in the May meeting. And then it can, you can have it effective by the, by the June 30th deadline.
Sean, are, are there any limitations on the amendment process? If we did, as you propose and filed proposed rule. Is there something that limits us to just say minor amendments or could we make significant changes if we didn't like what was filed?
You can make. You can make changes. As long as we've opened up the, the section of rule. I think there's more permission in. How, how much of a change you want to do. One, one limit that the code reviser will impose on us under the laws. Is if, if we proposed a rule and then try and amend that by opening up a new section and making changes in something that wasn't originally proposed. Then they would, they wouldn't accept that frankly. And so we'd probably have to have a second, a second hearing on that. So we will be limited to the scope of, of rules that are opened up. For amending, but I think once you're inside that, you know, as long as you're not doing. Doing something where, where you're really just turning everything on its head. There's, there's more permission to, to make those changes.
Do you need a motion?
Um, I'll, I'll ask John, I don't know that we need a motion to, to file a, a CR 102. It's, it's more just getting the direction from the commission that.
I think that's true. The, the safest, easiest way to document your work is to spend 20 seconds to have a vote.
I will move.
I will second.
All right. We have a motion and a second to do what.
You have 20 seconds.
What Sean has suggested.
Four seconds left.
Favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. With your review, we'll have a CR 102 that we can, we can file by the deadline. The thing gets it on the calendar.
Make sure, I'm sure you'll be very precise on this. Make sure whatever we have will be subject to just minutia.
Yeah, yeah. So. Sorry, I have to, to run through the magnations of all that with you, but, but thank you for, thank you for following and.
It means April will be busy with rulemaking.
April's going to be a busy rulemaking month. The, the last thing I just want to bring up on a, on, on the legislative front, I guess, and, and this is something we, we mentioned, but. We had had a lot of discussion about, there was a bill that passed that creates the artificial intelligence workforce. This was request legislation from the Attorney General's Office. It has a very broad scope of just how, how to, how to handle AI in many different aspects of. Of, of, of how it's used. One thing that was not included in the bill was political advertising, the thing that we look at for the deep fakes issue. But I, I mentioned briefly the Attorney General's Office that, that we'd probably be interested in just. And keeping track of that and understanding that in election advertising that the deep fakes is a, is a big concern. We've heard that from, from a lot of people. It's an emerging area. In our, our regulation and we have the, the new law. So I, I just want to, I just want to flag that for the commission's attention that that might be an area where, where we want to. At least follow the work of the task force. And if they have some spinoff subcommittee work in that, that, that might be something. That might be an issue that, that they'd be interested in, in taking a look at. Of course, we'd want to, we want to be involved in that. So. Just want to flag that for your attention is, is one collateral thing that came out of the legislative session.
And I, I took a look at how they defined their various seats on that task force that certain ones are pointed by the legislature or somebody, Attorney General's Office. None are, are, seemed to me that they would fit anybody from our agency being representative on the task force itself, Sean.
But that committee had. Maybe, you know, once they need and. Figure out their scope that, that this could be an area where they, they might want to look at.
And bagel yourself.
Yeah, I mean, we certainly.
They're waiting four and a half years. Is that worth? Yes.
Make sure the minutes reflect that, Jalen.
A couple of other things as we were tracking some bills that just have to do with state employees and one of them was that in certain jobs. That applicants don't require a college degree or some kind of specific degree. That's one thing. Also allowing for state employees to accrue. Another week of leave without losing it. Right now it's like 240 hours. If you pass a certain deadline, right? So people get another week, which is good. And then allowing for cities and towns to run elections. In conjunction with even years. That did not pass. I think we have a, trying to follow up with a, a couple of people to find out a little bit more about, about that.
Tell you that our county auditor was very glad to hear.
Oh my gosh, yes. That would just be a nightmare for them.
We, we may have some county auditors that come to Vancouver and we can ask respect.
Yeah, that was big. She was really following up.
Yes.
And then she announced that she was retired.
For real? She is this time? Oh my gosh.
My sense is that the corner has been turned on that issue. That it was pretty, had pretty good momentum behind it until this legislative session and.
Yes.
It could come back, but my sense is it's, it's waning.
Obviously it's us, but I get the argument. I'll turn it out.
I, I. Hear people realizing how difficult it will be. Taking the odd, being a candidate in the odd year, moving to the even year and having to raise money and to communicate. While all of the big money races are going on and just.
Circus noise.
Forty-clip race on the ballot has got a good place to be.
You know, I mean, I've run a, a, a number of, of off-year races and they're hard knock. To get people to pay attention to. And when you're the 49th, you know, race on a ballot. And Congress and Senate, president and governors, even legislators that are. Getting more attention than you do, it just feels terrible.
Good things, Andy Alshon. All right. Next up is a discussion that's following on from our strategic planning. Spent almost five hours of work concluded going through our current strategic plan. What works, what, that, what doesn't maybe, and what things we want to focus on the coming year. One of the outcomes from that discussion, something that. Alan has agreed, I hope it wasn't too reluctantly, to take on as his responsibility as the vice chair, Shepard. This project. One of the words that I remember that he mentioned several times at our meeting was. That our mission include timely information for the public. The word timely is very, very important. And so focused on that, we had a long discussion which resulted. Materials in our packet today about a new charter on implementing some. Changes, changes for C3 and C4, but the monitoring of C3 and C4 reports. Make sure that they are filed and that timely information is available for those who want to use it. So. Alan, you'll take over and lead this discussion?
I can do that. I want to start with the staff report.
Well, that would probably be a good idea. Let's start with the staff report about what the charter, that, that. The document is very helpful in terms of GOAT type. nation result. Thank you for that.
If I if I may have your indulgence, just go take one step back and just very briefly discuss the overall strategic planning takeaway from the meeting and then go and what you tell into that one. And so I think for your consideration, the takeaway I had was that we will continue with the lobbying disclosure, strategic planning element as well as digital political advertisement element. And then so that's two of the what I see as five. And then the one new one, the second one was political, digital political advertisement. And then two more that will continue, but I think we reached a new focus on those. So one of those is the reporting system modernization, which is the ongoing orga improvement element. Games can speak on this, but that's going to be affected. It's still going to be in place and it will continue. But it will be affected by a new project for the C four enforcement piece. That will sounds like the commission would agree that will be a new priority for the programming team. And then the outreach program again will continue. Next month will be in Vancouver, will be a big part of that. Also, I heard that our focus should be on these public facilities, what we call 555. That violations in that school. That we should focus our efforts on that in the coming year or so, as well as maybe try developing guidance for pro and con.
Thanks this morning.
Michelle this morning.
That group sounds very interesting, wanting to work with us, so I say we can.
Yeah, and we would bring back a revised charter in that area to you to incorporate 555, but wanted to, we had less detail coming out of the retreat on that I than we did on C three and C four. We just wanted to check in to make sure that you're okay with that commission strategic that commission outreach plan morphing into more commission slash staff outreach, because I think a lot of the 555 work will be staff with potentially a commission component. But if we're going out and training and creating guides rather than revise, what I didn't hear coming out of it is revising the what I heard from Commissioner Hayward was that perhaps in order to that new guidelines, really the legislature is audience for that, that but we can do the training piece. And so that's what we would be focused on.
There's a training next month.
We have, yeah, we're we're sending Phil Stutman to Shalan to train with the finance director local governments and Jennifer Hansen is going to be talking with the municipal attorneys association immediately after your meeting in Vancouver. And we've already last fall sent trainers to, I think it was convenient to talk with the school communicators. So we are making the rounds and we'll continue. But we would bring back a charter that's revised to memorialize that approach. Sorry, Peter, here.
No, no, thank you. That's very helpful. So that that's kind of the the landscape. And then the the, well, I guess the the fifth piece that's on our current strategic plan is process improvement for the enforcement process. And I I think what I pose, we look at is that this new enforcement mechanism that we're seeking to develop would be that element of the strategic plan. That that would be what we focus on process enforcement conspiracy. So while that was going away, will be targeted at a more automated before it all.
And the and the process improvement logic that really was to get process improvement embedded in the way we do business. And that's actually happening so that staff can do many process improvements on a regular basis without us having to have a strategic planning project to do that now.
That's fair. In fact, just this week, we had a discussion with the team soliciting their ideas for what could be new purpose to target. That is incorporated into our way of doing business.
Could be the way we do business.
BG has been a big help with that over the years and changing our mindset, too.
Well, BG is BG is still here to discipline you if you.
And she's not shy about it.
Which is.
And carry a big stick.
That brings us to our our new charter, which you all have had a chance to take a look at, and and that's proposing a new process by which we use our systems to identify ahead of time those people who owe us mandatory reports and what we propose to focus on for this year on this election cycle is what we know are mandatory reports for people in full filers. So not many violents who don't own periodic reports. But full filers will all owe us a 21 day pre-election, pre-general election report, seven day pre-general election report and a 10 day post-general election report. So James and his team posing to develop a a system with the future in mind. So it's not a one off that we use and then we have to start from scratch. I think we want to, when we expand this program in the future, it's something we could build on. It builds on the lobby system that that we developed as well. And what we would then be able to do is target people who owe those degree reports. We would propose that we send them all notices ahead of time saying you have the requirement coming up in X number of days. And then let's hope that my our our experience is that that generally does help compliance significantly. For instance, when we do our F one financial disclosure, group enforcement, when we identify those people who have not reached the deadlines and we reach out to them, say, you're going to have a hearing on this. Compliance rates, it's like half of the people who are out of compliance drop off on radar and quickly get compliance. So I would hope that these kind of notices will quickly get attention filed.
Well, even before the deadline, it's for some reminders and you can see dramatic increases in filing each of those days.
One of those reminders are late.
About three.
No, it's close.
I actually said that it was great to get my last one done. And someone sent me a note and said, you still owe one next year.
That is actually.
First my bubble.
No, you don't understand. I didn't run for reelection. Sorry, you did some errant to the the next year. So that's definitely an educational opportunity for us to continue to work on. But so and then if people miss that deadline, then there will be some unfortunately. They would then get a notification, you are out of compliance. And what we would propose is since he's coming quick succession, there basically there's the 21 day reports. Two weeks later is the seven day report and then a little more than two weeks, 10 day report. So if somebody doesn't comply with it, say you get the reminders ahead of time, this is coming up. They would get notification. You have missed the deadline compliance. And then what we would propose after the 10 day post is that we begin the enforcement process so that we're not doing three discrete enforcement process that overlap in a matter of weeks.
If they get the notice, let's say the 21 day report, they out of compliance. I must admit that's public. That that everyone who is been found out of compliance, they didn't file the 21 day before. Somebody could go in and get a list of who who got notices that they're out of compliance.
That's not something that we have done with other notices, but we could incorporate it into here if that's what you want.
Sensual to the purpose of doing this is to get timely information. And if they're able to keep hidden the fact that they're out of compliance until we after the much, much less incentive to make available the information. If it's, you gotta, you gotta go to compliance and it's 21 day before the election. You're not going to get out of compliance.
Yeah, I think Alan makes a good point and I'd suggest that the reminder letter tell them that if they are not timely in filing that notice, that it may be on the information available on our website to the public.
That's helpful. Thank you.
One thing following up on what Peter said, just to make clear, and I think it's clear in in the charter. So I want to make it clear in the verbal presentation that the enforcement piece would come in the second, the second phase of the of that, that we're looking at that for 2025.
And I will say to paraphrase William F. Buckley, I sometimes fear that I I I come across as standing at port progress yelling stop. And that is never my intention, but I do think it is. It would be easy for me to tell you, yes, we can do X, Y, and Z. We can do it all tomorrow and do it all well. But part of my responsibility to you and to the public and to the staff is to but you know, what we can reasonably do and do well, do within our resources. That's why sometimes maybe it comes across that we, staff are saying things will take longer than we would ideally like. But it's not because we don't want to do it and I think it's a good idea. But I do think we have to, you know, staff is stretched thinly currently, case loads. I want to make sure.
So by doing what you're proposing?
Yes.
I'm not passing judgment on whether that's good or bad, but yep, because I need to have a bigger discussion. That will not prevent people from filing complaints that campaigns out of. It just would, the enforcement piece would be coming externally as opposed to internally. And your proposal would be that the internal piece would be implemented in 2020.
Correct, that just as importantly as the capacity issues is the let's look at the results of what we get out of this first round so that the commission can perhaps set some enforcement priorities to guide that process. So that I think that's just as important as the piece that Peter spoke to about staff capacity given current caseloads.
And Commissioner Hayward's point, former Commissioner Hammonds would often talk about having a wall of shame. And that may be a bit of a penalty, akin to a penalty that try this first round that it's made public that you're out of compliance. That may have a incentive effect. Kim says, with our resource and the commission's direction, okay, we we've seen how this has worked. Is the are the 12 outstanding fire researchers, is that focus our efforts for the for the next year? And is that it may be that we decide that's the most important thing. It may not be. Back with that data, we can give you that input, so.
But hopefully there'll be a much smaller pool at the end of this that will is in not in compliance. And so even whether it's external or internal, it's not a smaller pool.
Reports due October 1st, making that date up, it might not be the right date. When would the first out of compliance trigger be fired? That day or the next day?
Provided there's not an outage of the system, because there is a a provision in our law that if there's even a short outage of our systems, that you get an extra day. So we ran into that in October, actually, with the 21 day report. It on the calendar was due, I think, October 17th, but actually not really due till October.
But there's a grace period.
Yeah.
If the report comes in, let's say 21 day report comes in and this campaign hasn't filed anything before then. This is the first mandatory report where they got the thing from us where we're being proactive and saying, file it or you will be in violation. It comes in and you look at it and you go, this is interesting. They've never filed any C threes, yet they're showing they've raised $8,000 and it's not showing up as in kinds on the C four. You kind of have coming at you right there that there's going to be a C three violation. They're going to have failed to file C threes. You, do people on the outside have to send you a complaint that there are missing TC threes? Or is that something you're going to be able to just pick up? Because the C four is the admission itself that C threes are missing.
Think, and I'm looking to to James, but I think right now it would take inspection of that report. We'd have to build, I don't know if we'd have to build a query to.
Correct, so.
Okay.
As as we up till now been talking about it and envisioned it, we would be strictly looking at where those reports filed or not. Not doing the analytics of for the for the C four that we just got post-election. Does it have a prior balance? Because that would tell us there was a C four prior to this missing that maybe we don't have. Does it have deposits entirely and only within this reporting period? Which would mean that then we would need to look to see if they filed C threes and does the net total of those C threes add up to all the money that should have come in during the period? So we haven't envisioned, at least up till this point, at least my mind hasn't been there about doing that level of analytics on this first round. And we're we're making some tough choices about how much effort we can put into building all of this out because of the very short timeframe. And I would really hate to envision something very large and not deliver anything at all. I think the most important thing is I I want to be able to deliver something for the general election on a short timeframe. And then that always becomes the question when we do any work like this is to say, what are the pieces that we can get done? What's the most valuable thing that we can get done in the time we have? And do that most valuable thing? And then we can add on. And so if something goes really fast, and this is just sort of normal, you know, continuous improvement process. Something goes goes really well, great. What's the next most valuable thing that we can put on? And so hearing these ideas about which things have value is great because that hadn't come out in the conversation so far. If but if we wanted to do sort of the full deal, I would go back to the rest of the executive team and say, we need to do some drastic replanning around work that we're doing.
I probably wasn't trying to say you should do that as much as it is to say, whatever would be easiest for you, would it be easier for you if automatically when you received a C four that's on its face saying, and probably have some other problems back here based upon what's out in front of us that was mandated return, a mandated return that you have the authority once you do your post-election thing to go get those things? So we can tell the public, you don't need to file the complaints about missing C threes, about missing C fours. We have in front of us the document that's going to give us probable cause to believe that there's a reason we need to go get more. I mean, whichever way is easiest for you, but I'm I'm just trying to keep you from getting 100 public complaints filed based upon the C fours that we mandated.
Yeah, yeah, sorry for the really long answer.
No, bro, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, and underneath it all, we have the data because that's part of what comes on the C four is how much money would should have been on your prior C four. So we have the data, we don't have the analytics capability at hand, and that'll be part of that, you know, discussion that I think we need to make as implementers is what's the downfall of not having this? And is that way? I think that's what you're really getting at, right? Is it way worse if you don't do this? You're just making things worse for yourself.
James, I have a question for you. Does it change how you build a system or tools now? If you know you need to add the analytics downstream, say, next year? Because we don't have time to do it now, but you want to do it. Do you do you build it differently?
It's so awkward because I looked this way to look at you, so sorry. And then I looked back at the camera to talk to talk to you. It, hearing the conversations upfront always helps us during the development process. So it's great to have these conversations and we may change a few things about what we do. So it's great to have these conversations, and we may change a few things about what we do. In this case, we have the bulk of the data, and I don't think the approach will change much.
So I started off saying that we want to do a flexing, flexibility built in so that we can add on things in stages, and it's just a great discussion. I think, I'm not your, I don't mean to accuse you of oversimplifying things, but if you said, but if you said, you know, this year, focus on the fire commissioner races in Thurston County, we could call all those C4s and do the analysis and, and you know, make sure every C3 is there.
But it's like what we do with audits. We haven't done them in a while because of other issues, but Kurt did a really good job of identifying certain kinds of races for good reasons, and that if there were problems before they were, and if they weren't, why, that there weren't.
Exactly.
Hopefully we can achieve the same result with.
Yeah. And, and when it's an audit and we choose eight races or 12 races, then we can have that kind of focus. I'm just trying to make the point that, that would be, that C3 analysis would be a great next step to get to. But it is a next step to get to, and it's, we would, if we want, you know, it seems obvious on its face that that information is there. But if we're going to automate that, that involves developing systems that can do that analysis. And that's quite doable, but it's not all going to be done.
Well, not just.
There are two things that you can't get done with. We, we know that our goal is to provide timely information, and the C3 and the C4 are probably the two most important documents towards the underlying purpose of writing, who gave, got how much that the upcoming court for us. Even C3s, while we're not talking about them in this particular project this year, people need to understand that it's absolutely a part of our long-range strategy that we're going to know about C4s. And the time. That's the driver that came out of that strategy, and so we're going to be well-acted. We know that expenditures and expenditures is a thing that would achieve our goal, which is to provide timely information to the voters. And we're going to try and get this first step, these three C4s, to give us the information, which is going to really hard. I applaud you for what you're trying to do. I'm just trying to make sure that everyone understands that that the commission is pushing a proactive and choice, and it is C3 and C4 oriented over time.
Thank you. Yeah. I think we're in a line that's the long-term, or even near midterm goal is to. And, and we'll come back to this. As Kim said, we'll have some data on how this worked. And then you might decide, okay, the most important next priority would be doing the same thing for the primary. When we know there are mandatory reports, there's a little more nuance there as to who's in the primary. Or you might say, let's build this C3 analysis. That's the next most important thing. And there will be pieces of this along the way that we build to get us to all of that. I know Fisher Hayward, that then maybe we get to a point. The legislature can change things so that all reports are mandatory. And in which case, expand the program and much more to those. Now, we don't know if you don't know what's a report.
Well, and we can also consider it in, in conjunction with other enforcement priorities. So perhaps if you're wanting to do essentially group enforcement on missing C3s revealed at, on C4s, that's a level of content analysis of reports that we've never gone to in group enforcement. So does that replace group enforcement for F1s? You know, so what, what are the?
Yeah. As a vote, and I had a vote, I'd say yes, because I consider C3s, C4s clinical.
I, this goes back before my time, but my sense is that we do group enforcement on F1s partially because we could.
One day, one deadline.
Yeah, there's one deadline. We know who owes them, or we have a pretty good data set of who owes them. And so going back 10 years or so, we can go, or we're able to identify, okay, that's something we can do in a relatively.
Question, other than missing the deadline to file, which triggers. Have you ever been able to identify complaints that are filed with the PDC? Because either something wasn't disclosed to you at that point?
Okay. Oh, yeah.
We did that frequently, often on the more local races where somebody will know, hey, I know they've got a job, they're not reporting here, or I know they own that property.
And that has been a development since the commission decided to put F1s online. We've had very few cases when you had to file a public records request.
Keep them know.
Yeah, people can see.
Say, I know that their spouse is, or you have a city.
But, and, and as we're considering enforcement priorities, just keep in mind that if we don't do F1 enforcement, someone might do it for us. Yeah. So we may not get out of doing F1 enforcement.
Issues in F1s may trigger complaints to other agencies too.
True.
And that is a perspective on this. I think this predates but F1 was considered. There was a, there was a big, at the point I came over from the legislator, legislature, there was a pretty big issue with putting the F1 online. The commission was holding that position, and a lot of folks from the legislature were, were biased, upset, came in.
Oh, I was.
Yeah, yeah. The lobby for that, and I think.
Lobby to be exempt.
Yes. Lobby to be exempt from the online publication of it. But I think from that discussion, the commission had expressed a very strong interest in the F1. The F1 publication process, but just the F1 filing itself was, was a priority. Sometimes you look at like, when, once that's done and the dust is settled, then, you know, you, you can look at another thing and say, well, this is, this is the priority, because that one's already. That was, that was, that piece was very important.
Passed a bill to take it off, or I bet the government vetoed the portion of the bill that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, all, this is all a really good discussion, and I do think we have to work within our, our resources and advocate for more resources, putting more use of the transparency fund. But, you know, it will always be from the outside to say, let's say we decide we're not going to do F1 group enforcement. Somebody may decide, I'm going to file 600 complaints about F1s, because I'm going to do that work for you. And so I wish I could promise you, we can do everything, and we can do it well, but we can't. So we either have to figure out what we can't do, or what we can't do now, or what we can't do well. To the kind of difficulties that you all need to make and help us prioritize.
And we.
Need a motion to support our.
I think we generally do. The commission adopts the strategic plan. So if you agree with sort of the outline I gave of what our five elements would be. That is our strategic plan.
Yeah, well, I will continue to be a painting aside on a lot of this. I will make the motion that we adopt this. I do want to put another matter after. These three general election reports in a timely fashion with notice of like, when someone has failed to meet.
We can make those revisions.
Second, Alan's motion.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions from anyone?
So I just make one comment, and that is, I understand the limitations that the staff has, and especially our ability to do things electronically. And we need to be very conscious of how we manage that. But I worry a little bit that there are things that we're, that we've been doing that we will walk away from. And I'm I'm reluctant to do that because I see this as being a much longer term project. And I don't want us to forget the things that we've been trying to finish in order to get started on this one.
That's the rub. Yeah.
Appreciate that perspective. That's exactly what.
Yeah.
I, I'm, I would ask the staff to think about bringing as a proposal for what we ought to take to the legislature for additional funding and staffing so that we can do the things that we need to do.
Well, that raises a good question. You know, we've, we've had some general discussions about our legislative strategy. Like I mentioned, that, that the strategic planning meeting, that maybe our focus should be on resources. So I could lose traction on the policy front. Focus our stare.
So I'm certainly there. I, I think anything that we can do to take advantage of the transparency fund. But to put it in the context of the things that we're trying to accomplish, both the things that are underway and this this new project, and put, put the legislature in the position of being the roadblock to getting this work done.
Or ideally not being the roadblock, but.
Yeah, that, that's not the way my experience with the legislature.
They don't have, they don't have no problems being roadblocked.
Roadblocks are, until they realize that there are the roadblock to something that needs to get done, they tend not to have a whole bunch of motivation. But, you know, and working with our, with our friends to get them to understand what the advantage of doing these things are. You know, and I'd even, I'd even go into the, you know, the school and local government community as we're working through with them ways of being able to improve their communication. That's a way of building a group that's willing to help us on some of the other things that we need to do as well. So that would be my advice. Worth everything you've paid for it. But I guess you paid for today, so think of it, think of it as my advice in a week. Free and worth everything you paid for it. I want to say one other quick thing. In the first bullet, the implement unique identifiers, I think that is like outstanding.
That's a key to a lot of this, and you have to build on it.
Yes.
Going in a different direction.
It was, it was back in my early days in IT, when I was actually taking over the management of a commercial airplane's IT. My staff took me out and said, you really need to learn something about IT if you're going to manage it. And I took a, a data course, and the first thing I learned was the importance of a unique identifier. And that's, you know, that is the absolute key to being able to manage data in a, in a disciplined way.
And not to give you a false impression, we actually have the identifiers.
Yeah.
We don't put them on cases. So, yeah, so we have the identifiers. So implement is the key word in that sentence.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I would echo what Fred said. When I worked on the clerk IT courses, getting unique identifiers for the persons in the cases was our big challenge. So that we didn't associate the case with the wrong person.
That's right. And as we're starting to look at repeat offenders, we want to make sure, you know, it's the same John Smith. And because we, it's not, certainly not unusual to see some.
But it is a repeat offender.
Yeah, we, we actually, now, now I'm going to labor the point, but because it's something I, I think I'm proud that we do a great job, is that, one, for candidates, we actually use the Secretary of State voter ID information, because we get declarations from the Secretary of State. And we know those people year over year over year. And we have a huge database of all the people that are in return, so it makes it very easy for us to identify them. But also to say that Kendra's staff do an excellent job. Every basically new person or entity, a political committee that comes into the system, is reviewed by her staff against our database. We have tools that we built to search that show addresses and similar email addresses. And they search and they determine, even though you're telling us you're new, do we really know about you? Because we want to put all your records together so the public can see the big picture of you. And they do a phenomenal job considering the thousands of new people that we get every year. And the fact that we don't ask for social security numbers or anything like that, because of course, we don't want that.
The motivation to obscure.
Yeah, and they do a phenomenal job of such a large volume of folks coming in who spell their name in 20 different ways, and political committees that abbreviate and don't abbreviate, international on the end, not. And it's been really effective to build that database of identifiers. And now it's just a matter of getting them on the enforcement cases.
Question.
We have him motion and second. Had some discussion. We're ready to call questions. All in favor of Alan's motion?
Aye.
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 Don't know whether we heard Doug or not.
Fisher North, are you with us?
You're muted right now. It's star six. I'm not sure how you got muted.
Can you?
There you go. Yeah, there you go there now.
Want to make sure we record your vote for the. Yes.
Yeah, my, I, I voted aye.
All right, we have, motion passes five to zero.
We will bring back amended charter on the commission outreach plan.
And these, these are somewhat living documents, and, you know, I think we will continue to listen to your input and report back to you, and so they're not set in stone. They don't feel that you voted on it today, or that we need to stick to something, and we're going, luckily decide we're going in a slightly different direction.
The point of these things is to learn.
Yes.
You learn, you change.
That's right, because you don't want to say, well, this is a path we've chosen, and we're not going to veer from it.
That's right.
Another topic that came up, and I'm not saying the commission made a decision with it. I had a decision, but we, we made a decision. I wanted to talk about, and I did at the meeting, about the warning letter process. It's my strong belief that warning letters should not go out to people when the staff believes that there actually has been a violation. Warning isn't an appropriate thing for a violator. Warning's appropriate for, you came really, really close to the line and arguing. Just to give you a warning, don't do things like this, which you get into this. But if you, they believe there's been a violation, then some kind of a statement of understanding where the person admits that there was this violation, whatever penalties, any that you agree with or whatever, would seem to be a more appropriate way to go, or to ticket to. But I, I those cases where you actually believe that there's been a violation.
Statement.
When you have to have a violation, they have to admit to the violation.
A statement of understanding with or without penalty.
With or without penalty. But at least if, if you believe there's a violation, warning isn't the proper way to say, we think there was a violation for moving.
A warning is defined as evidence of a minor violation. So I, and I think, is that in rule and statute?
Rule.
In rule. So maybe the commission wants to act to change the rule, because that is how you have to find.
The way it works with traffic tickets, right? It's the way that it works with traffic tickets.
It's somewhat similar. I mean, I just want to be careful.
Well, it isn't actually the same. A warning in the traffic ticket arena does not generate paperwork that makes it into the computer system. It's an oral admonition from the officer. The officer does not issue a piece of paper that warns you that you violated the law or may have violated the law. In the traffic stop situation, if the officer believes there's a violation, and in his discretion thinks a warning is inappropriate, then he charges you.
I thought that warnings were documented.
No. Not in the sense of a citation that I can go search. I can't go see how many times you've been warned, Fred. I can only see how many times you've been cited.
I know that.
The campaign is going to not, is going to say, no, we didn't get any into the other than it's told us to, you know, be careful in the future, but that we haven't anything wrong. That's the way they're using it, is that we got a warning letter. I don't want to give a warning letter. If it's a minor violation or whatever, then violation, minor, no penalty works for me. But they've got.
I have one word of caution for Alan's approach, and it's the same criticism that's made of the plea bargain system, the criminal justice system, and that is that we may overwhelm ourselves if we abandon the warning letter altogether and make each case go to either a statement of understanding or if there's not an agreement, a contested hearing. We might want to think about with all of the other things that we're taking on, whether this is a good time to add that to our workload.
That's exactly the caution I was going to bring up, which again, I don't like to be in a position saying we shouldn't do what you want to do. But this would be a wholesale change in the way we handle hundreds of cases. And a warning is akin to a traffic citation in the sense that I walk up to your car and say, here you go. We have found evidence of a violation here. Don't do it again. And the commission will take it into account if you do it again. Versus a statement of understanding that somebody has to agree to. And I could tell you for every well, Kim can tell you better than I can, that each statement of understanding becomes a negotiation. Not that we negotiate the terms of them, but people call up and say, well, what do you mean by this? And I don't want to sign this. What do I owe you? And I need customer service to help me do this. And, you know, multiply that times hundreds. And then they don't agree to it in the end, after all of hundreds of thousands of hours of staff time, they all turn into hundreds of cases.
But I just, I just made a comment about learning, and since I'm not going to be here to learn, I have some advice. That is, why don't, why don't you go back and do an analysis of the warning letters that we have sent out? And come back and talk to the commission about the characteristics. For example, how many warning letters are given to the same campaign? How many warning letters result in subsequent violations? In other words, do the warning letters actually work to change the behavior of the campaign of an individual campaign so that they do a better job in the future? You know, what are the nature of warning violations versus statement of agreement violations versus? But, but come back and let's talk about those characteristics and say, is this a system that's actually doing what we want it to do? Which is getting people to comply without making it onerous, both on us and on them? Or is this something that is not doing what we want it to do and we, we need to be more vigorous? You know, I'm kind of with Alan a little bit that I think probably the warning letters are a little bit too easy. And that we ought to at least test that and look at when we use them and when we don't. And then make a considered decision about what our strategy should be.
I will say that for all of our cases, compliance officers are looking at compliance history and considering whether there is previous warnings for the same section of law. So they may have gotten something wrong on their F1, but now are we talking about C series reporting? And so there has to be like instances. So if there is a warning in, in place, then they will consider an SOU. There have been cases, and I know some.
Regardless of, regardless of what section of law it is.
We are, we do, we do focus in on section of law. So have you violated this section of law or have we warned you for a minor violation of this section of law previously?
And then I can get a warning for another section of law later?
Good, yes.
I think that's part of what we need to look at.
Yeah, and I just did want to follow up. There have been situations where we have issued successive warnings for the same section of law when the warning was issued after this violation occurred. So they had no chance to cure this violation given this warning, and now we're giving another warning for that violation. So we do consider that too. Did they have, did they have the benefit of the warning in, in this new minor violation?
I'm probably a little less willing to give them the benefit of the warning.
So if I go and look at somebody's file, the warning letter is going to be of record. I can see it.
Yes, you can show on the case.
All right, so it's the interpretation.
And there's language at the bottom that we cite that the case is dismissed. There's a section of law that we need to dispose of the complaint to show action. And so I think that's what's being referred to is it's dismissed under seven five five. And we're disposing of it.
They have a program where they will offer you, it is fine. But they keep, they keep it open for a year and if you commit no further fines, it's dismissed them.
That's basically what we do. On suspensions.
One thing about these, these warnings is they're not findings of violation, which helps to expedite the resolution. Because we can't make the finding. To make the finding, you have to have the opportunity to, for somebody to dispute it and bring it before the commission. Side. So it is part of the expedited process of what you're hearing. That it allows staff to administratively resolve cases. The bookends of it, one of which, one side of which Kim was pointing out is that they are tracked. So somebody who comes back, it's, it's not intended to, and generally doesn't allow somebody to continue to violate the law, continue to get slapped on the wrist. It will escalate up in staff's mind and how they and how we process it. On the other end, and Kim, if I'm wrong, we generally won't issue a warning if it has not been remediated. If it's a late filing, you got to make sure that, that the, that the report was filed. So nobody, nobody's being dismissed on a matter where they haven't complied with the law. So those bookends really help expedite. And then just to give one. Yep, of course.
And the, the potential exception to that rule would be we're dealing with a 2019 campaign, a 2020 campaign, and there, as it was referenced earlier, they no longer have their books. And we've talked about how can you recreate? No, they're just gone, you know. And so then we will include in the warning failure to maintain records.
And some of this goes back to, Judge Lachey made the analogy to be targeting. I would urge you to consider the value of prosecutorial discretion when we have hundreds of cases. We need to dispose of them in various ways. Is a 2019 allegation of somebody who had a $500 campaign and they don't have their books? Even though it's just within the five year period, they're supposed to have their book. Is that the most important thing to have to bring to the commission that this is a violation? And this is more important than other cases or equally important? So they should all end up in the bottleneck of hearings? I would urge you to say that. I think we exercise that discretion judiciously. You know, I'm tempted to say, fine, we'll bring all the cases to you. Let's do it.
When I'm, when I'm.
We can do it.
I, having been the one who sat through the four hour I would encourage that not to be our plan. But again, I think the point right now is that we need how this is used. We've had people who, I don't suspect have done the level of detailed analysis from the perspective that we have, which is balancing, as we've talked about it several times. And let's, let's get some data. Let's look at it. Let's understand it and have some conversations before we jump one way or the other. But like I say, I, I tend toward the view that we need to take people to court more often. And this kind of fits in that category as well.
And I, I'd like to add that I like the direction that both Alan and Fred are going with this. And what I'm inclined to think we ought to do is ask staff to analyze it along the lines of what Fred is saying and then put forth a memo or something similar to the charter that we got at this meeting that says, okay, this is kind of the direction we want to go in. Here are the steps we can reasonably take, recognizing we don't have unlimited resources, that this is going to have to be an incremental process. We can't just jump there and get there right away. But are there pieces of this that we can do and have a plan for developing more later?
I, and I would add that the unique identifier that we mentioned earlier on enforcement cases, once we have that in place, it would assist in this kind of analysis. So there, there might be some work that we need to do first in data collection. And then we can better.
I would be shocked if that wasn't the case.
You know, if there's a further violation, well, if warnings are not treated as, they're not violations. Find a violation, then there can't be further violation because of the initial, there was a warning that went up, which meant that it might have been a violation had it gone further.
Definition of warning though, tell me what the definition is again?
Is a, that there appears to be a minor violation.
There appears to be, but the warning, the warning is not a statement of violation.
It's not a finding. We can't ask staff.
There hasn't been any finding of any violations. The person gets a warning. And then there's another instance and that in appears to be a violation of the thing that they've been warned about before. And at that point, hopefully either negative understanding, Henry, or we'll kick it to us. But technically, that first one goes out to the campaign. They can honestly take what the press would critically say. You know, we've been punished. The warning is not a violation.
But it is not a finding of violation. That's correct. And that's, that is an important distinction and things that we have to caution ourselves against. That we can't use a warning as something that ramps up another, it can't be used as evidence that then elevates a second violation that would, that would increase the penalty. What it is used for is that the triage of these cases to say, hey, does this person warrant us another warning? They already had one on this matter. No, now we're going to look at an SO, now we're going to look at a penalty SOU. And if they don't agree to that, then it would go for enforcement. So there are steps that ramp up without being penalized for that. The only last one I just wanted to make is that this is, this has been a long history. The implementation, the way we use warnings really comes out of the 2018 legislation. When we were, when the commission flooded with, with a lot of, a lot of complaints and a lot of those were ending up in court because of the way that the citizen action process or, and the legislature made specific findings in, in kind of updating and revamping the law. With a, with a specific intent to expedite the public disclosure enforcement procedures so that remedial campaign finance violations can be dealt with administratively. And that the Public Disclosure Commission should be guided to review and address major violations, intentional violations and violations that could change the outcome of election or material affect the public interest. So I'm not, I'm not saying that to disagree or to push back on what you're saying, but just in the broader perspective. There was a lot of work to move towards the process that we're using now with administratively getting rid of that, but also documenting when, yes, we see that that was late filed. It's not permission or shouldn't be used as permission to go out and say, I didn't do anything wrong. This case was dismissed. It's to say this case wasn't prosecuted because what I did was in the, in the PDC, it's not more the effort.
In the case of minor, declare a minor violation and no penalty. Because right now. The legislature.
Sorry, did you interrupt down? Are you done? I think that what we've heard here illustrates the importance of leaving some discretion with the staff because certainly some warnings are different than others. The example of the 2019 campaign is certainly different than something that was late filed last year that was significant, but we were so overwhelmed. We only issued a warning letter. And if we take away the discretion of the staff, we're going to find that we're going to have apples and oranges put in the same basket in terms of what we're doing going forward in our enforcement. And I think that would be a very unfortunate result.
I would second that. That's why I think we need to understand one.
Yeah, and like I said, the legislature wants us to be able to go after the more significant things, and that's good. They basically said you can teach staff the minor violations, but they didn't give you the authority to declare, to actually physically declare this is a minor violation. And that, that's my concern. Well, it may not be a grant to the campaign to say, hey, we didn't do anything wrong. Give me, give me a warning letter. Get that one.
Well, the information for this body gets weaponized. And that's just part of the cost of.
Usually, usually for the same reason.
In varying degrees.
I have one further suggestion, and that is we could add a sentence to that warning letter that says, this is not a finding that no violation occurred.
Please, I think Fred's suggestion that we have a bigger discussion about this perhaps, or some other.
The analysis, yeah, the analysis would benefit from the work that we're doing on unique identifiers. So once we get that in place, and we're going to have to do a whole lot of retroactive completion of data that we'll probably have to get outside help to do.
And I'd encourage that the first discussion here be the problem statement, not the solution. You know, let's, let's talk about what the problem is, what the data tells us. And then the commission can decide, okay, is this, is there some, is there something that we think we want to change? How do we get into the discussion of whether we want to make a change, et cetera? But don't try to do too much all at once.
Thanks for your indulgence in it, because like I said, it keeps coming up from the public and stuff about warning letters. We had a kind of discussion about what we. I thank you. We're good for
I just want to appreciate the fact that you're bringing it up because I think, you know, I've heard it enough too over the last year that I think it's something that we need to dig into, but I just want to make sure we understand what we're doing when we do it. My knee jerk is not any better than anybody else's, but.
We've blown through our brakes or we have some enforcement matters at eleven thirty. Few minutes to take management team reports, but the last, the last thing I'm going to say about warning letters is I flew home weeks ago. I was on the plane with a lawyer from Spokane, who's the chair of the Washington State Gambling Commission. And we had a long discussion about now what our commissions are like. And the gambling commission routinely, or they will cite someone for violation issues, sometimes four or five. So as they have different, I mean, they have cops that carry guns and stuff. I found that very interesting and she's, that's just how, that's the way they, they do this.
Their citations have a much more profound impact on businesses than ours do. Their citations have a much more profound impact on businesses than ours do.
All right, so management team update.
I'll save us some time by saying, I think in the budget and strategic planning discussion that covered.
Over and done.
More than enough.
Yeah, just a couple of items. First of all, we've got a May 1st and 2nd BAP coming up, and we'll have a number of cases for presiding officers. Those are a lot of the 2023 candidates who have not yet filed reports. And as we send out those hearing notices, we are hearing from some of them and getting those reports filed. Often zero-dollar reports, but they're getting them filed. And then the May 2nd date is set aside for complaint-driven, because it's coming from compliance officers outside of the 2023 group that we've been working on. There are additional cases that compliance officers want to take to BAP, and so you'll be hearing those as well. So that's going to be a very busy week.
So those dates again?
May 1st and 2nd? Oh, no.
No, it's all right.
Okay, okay.
I have the first on my calendar, so let me.
Okay, we'll make sure that the second is on your calendar. I'll double check. And then also, we are working on getting L3. These are lobbyist employer or lobbyist client reports that are due February 28th. Getting those notices of overdue reports out. We have a lot, about 1,600 registered last year to have lobbyists lobby for them, and we have about 500 missing. So we need to get on those and see what our notice of noncompliance does.
I don't know why it surprises.
Yeah, I think it's something that we see almost every year. I'm not sure we see it at this level, but often the lobbyist employers only have a reporting requirement once a month, once a year, and so sometimes they lose track of it. So it's kind of like the F1 filers, but even probably more divorced from our system because there are not also candidates running and doing reporting through our system. So they're really, we have to knock on their door and knock on their door loudly sometimes.
Kendra.
Good morning, commissioners. For the record, Kendra Hodgson with Customer Service and Outreach. I will do two things in our time is share, as many of you have already reflected, we are in full F1 or personal financial disclosure statement reminder season with the due date coming up on April 15th. So to date, there have been three reminders sent out. We will have weekly reminders that go out up to the 15th, and then there will be two after the 15th that say, we are now past, and we still do not have your F1. So we're in that full season. And as Kim reflected on the lobbyist employer reports, we did send a reminder out for that report being due on February 2nd. So again, that did have a preceding, the due date reminder out to those organizations. And the other to share with you is just a staff update for our team. Diana Izagary has joined us. She is our newest filer assistant specialist and is there on your screen hopefully as well. We're in about week 2.5 or 1.5, somewhere in there, getting up to speed and joining the group. Diana comes from an elections background, so she worked out at a local county elections office. So we're pretty excited to have her experience and understanding the cycle that our work works in and getting her ready to go for all the good questions and reminders that we'll be tackling. Any questions for me?
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Heard a lot from you all, but I.
I was just going to say, I'm going to be quick, because I don't want you to tell me to stop coming to the meetings in person. But I'll just share, I mentioned the user experience work on the F1 that we're having done, and that's actually already informing our user experience decisions on the lobbyist system, because we're taking back what we got from the initial analysis there and applying some of those lessons learned, particularly helping us to clarify how to direct people to put the right information in the right areas. When you report contributions in four different ways, it's actually, without reading all four questions ahead of time and looking at all the different possible answers, it's hard to figure out which answers go where. And we actually found by looking in the data, sometimes people are just filling in information in the first question that they see that's pretty close, but it's not the right question and doesn't have the right level of detail for the thing that they should really be filling out. And so we want to figure out a better pattern to help them get the information in the right place. We have complex law, and figuring out how to get it right is difficult, for sure. The other thing that I'll mention, because I don't ever really talk about it, is that we have a third-party interface into campaign finance where campaign management software companies that you use to handle all your contacts and mass mailings and all that stuff can actually submit your reports for you without ever using the PDC software. We maintain that interface. We have two new vendors that have contacted us this month that have interest in providing services to campaigns operating in the state of Washington. So that's always really exciting when that pool opens up, because the more choices campaigns have, of course, all the better for folks that are running their campaigns. So it's always exciting when we have people kind of join the field, and I'm going to leave it at that. And, but I will answer questions.
Questions for Jane? I only ripped through those reports. Now, we have some enforcement cases. You see Jay's return. Morning, Tab. Three cases are yours.
The modification, yeah, come in. And I'm going to change the order of the agenda really quick. I do have Judge Loring, who has joined, and she has a working docket today, so I wanted to get her. First, if that's possible.
Let's do that. That's where you end. Your testimony you'll be giving today will be through.
Thank you. Okay, so this is a renewal modification request for Judge Catherine Loring. This would cover annual reports ranging from years 2019 through 2023. It's front to back. Judge Loring is requesting a partial reporting modification as well as the retroactive modification that would exempt her from disclosing her spouse's business customers that paid $12,000 or more during the reporting periods, which are calendar years 2018 through 2023 for her spouse's business interests as the board of director president for Zero Waste Washington, which is a nonprofit organization. She states that her spouse is a volunteer and receives no income or profit sharing from Zero Waste Washington. And she states her husband may have access to the list of customers, but he owes his organization a duty of confidentiality and would not disclose the customers to her, and she does not have knowledge or access to the customer list. Also, Judge Loring is requesting a partial reporting modification as well as a retroactive modification that would exempt her from disclosing the business customers or clients that paid $12,000 or more to her spouse's firm, Loring Advising P L L C. She states her spouse, Kyle Loring, is an attorney and the owner of Loring Advising P L L C, and the firm is a single attorney firm. She states that the customer lists are unknown to her and confidential information, which they do not disclose. Judge Loring states the customer information is held as attorney-client privilege. Stated in both requests, to her knowledge, there are no business or financial relationships with either Zero Waste Washington or Loring Advising P L L C in the San Juan Superior Court. She does agree to recuse herself if a conflict was to arise between those companies and her duties with the Superior Court. This modification could be approved through the current term of office if the commission chooses pursuant to WAC 39028090. Her current term ends December 31st, 2024. She is a candidate currently, and if she wins that, she would need to come again for additional approval. I'm available for questions.
I have a question for Judge Loring, and that is whether the customers of the Loring Associates, Inc. are receiving legal services from her spouse. And if so, the basis for her claim that that's subject to attorney-client privilege, an opinion with which I strongly disagree.
All right, before I let Judge Loring answer, I need to swear her in, so.
She's a judge.
Oh, you're a judge, never mind, although I've sworn in.
I'm still, I'm still happy to be sworn.
No, we'll take it. You're an officer of the court. We'll take it at that. Can you answer Commissioner Leach's question?
Sure. So Commissioner Leach, I think I understand your question to be about Loring Advising P L L C and not with regard to Zero Waste Washington, where he's a voluntary.
I have no problem with the Zero Waste request. It's, if your spouse is a lawyer and providing legal services, I'll just tell you that my spouse was a lawyer, and for 13 or 14 years, I had to make the request of her law firm of all that information and disclosed it and researched the issue of attorney-client privilege. And I think there's some pretty strong Washington and national case law that suggests that information is not privileged.
Well, it has been my position that it is. I think it's my husband's position that it is privileged when, in the first year, where I simply disclosed, no, he was just starting his own company, and I had no concern that he wasn't receiving any income over $12,000 from a client, and more recently realized that I should actually be seeking an exemption. So it certainly has been his position to me that while identity of some clients might be public, the amount that they pay him is not, and he would consider privileged. But also, given the nature of the work, the identity of some clients is not public, and I would believe would be subject to the attorney-client privilege. So it sounds like maybe I haven't done the same research that you have done, but certainly he has taken the position to me that that information is privileged, and that's why I'm seeking the exemption.
I think he is providing legal services to these individuals or entities.
Yes, he maintains a solo practice as a lawyer where he's providing legal services to clients.
Thank you.
Anyone in the room? Judge Loring, is there anything that you'd like to say above beyond what?
Well, so I have it in the application, but from my perspective, these two requests do nothing to undermine the purposes of the PDC, because I have an independent duty separate from the PDC under the Code of Digital Conduct to identify any actual or apparent conflict of interest and to either make the disclosure on the record or to recuse. So there's no question whatsoever that I'm not permitted to hear a case in which my husband is either an attorney or a party. There's no question about that, and I would extend the same presumption to the nonprofit on which he sits as a voluntary board member. So there's no question that I would be recusing myself from any case in which he's an attorney or a party. And in fact, the Code of Digital Conduct refers to any situation where you know that he is an attorney or a party. And so if he was representing someone behind the scenes and never appeared in court, I would have no reason to know that and no reason to recuse. So from my perspective, the Code of Digital Conduct fully covers these issues, and I apply those, the rules there very conservatively and don't have any concern that I would be acting appropriately. So I really think these requests do nothing to undermine the purpose of the PDC.
I have a question for you again, then, Judge Loring, based on that comment. Let's say your husband is working behind the scenes for a party that appears before you and to a disinterested third person. Would that appear to be a conflict where you're deciding a case for a client of his, even though you don't know he's a client? Would some third party view that as a unfair system?
Perhaps. If anyone brought it to my attention that he was serving as an attorney, I would recuse myself. So if I had any basis to know that, I would recuse myself. And again, that's specifically the language in the Code of Digital Conduct, if you know that someone is an attorney or a party, and that's a rule that I have applied.
I'm not questioning your integrity, but I question how that appears to a third party who, after the fact, where you no longer have the opportunity to recuse, discovers these facts. And that's one of the reasons I think it's important that a judge with a lawyer spouse know who the major clients are of that spouse, so doesn't find that judge in that situation.
Understood. I think there are some unique circumstances in being in a small-town legal practice where a number of clients would never otherwise be known. And I don't, I can't speak for my husband, but I think his position is that he would not have the authority to disclose the existence of those clients for which no one would ever have a basis of knowing, and in particular, would not have authority to disclose how much they've paid him. And so that's the reason that I'm seeking the exemption.
And I've already expressed my disagreement with that legal opinion.
Understood.
Any advice, John?
Not off the top of my head. If you want to continue it, we can look closer. That would be fine. It's up to the commission.
Let my husband retire. Has this issue come up before?
Been a number of years, but we did have this issue come up. It was while Chair Levinson was on board.
Before I was here.
But we could dig that up and with Leach's maybe input.
Okay, I think under the circumstances, we can't, we don't have the ability to draw up that information today. We probably should continue this matter to the next.
And it's important to have fresh eyes on it.
The next modification docket. Yeah, Brad, let us know how you vote. So that we can have the benefit of whatever history will teach us from prior discussions and input from our counsel.
And an opportunity for Judge Loring to.
And an opportunity for Judge Loring to maybe do a little more research on her own. And we could certainly provide you with, we'll send you a copy, or Tabitha will, of the one that occurred under Judge.
I have to recheck the record to see if it was a written briefing.
Yeah.
Anyway, we'll dig up what we have on this, when it came before the commission before. I don't want to make any precipitous decisions here today, so thank you for your time.
Sure, I don't think that I'm available to be here at the May date, so I'll talk with Ms. Townsend about that. I do believe, I think separately, that when I first, when I filed my first F1, I was granted the exception for not disclosing my prior clients, and that was in 2018. I was granted that exemption and was not required to disclose my law firm clients and amounts. I also do question what the purpose of the specific application form for law firm clients is, if it's not to not require the disclosure of those identities. But in any event, I certainly respect the desire to have some additional research and information, and I will look forward to whatever you're able to provide.
Try not to be inconsistent here, so thank you very much. We'll be in touch. Tab will be in touch. We have a meeting in April, so I don't know whether that will be more convenient or not. Our next meeting in Olympia is.
Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so Ms. Burns has joined us again, and she would be next on the docket. And before I get going on that, I do want to give a brief review of the information that was requested by Ms. Burns, and the commission had shared that they would be interested as well. Through the research and pulling records. Through the research and pulling records, we could find seven requests located for consulting firms of different variations. Six of them were approved with Mrs. Burns' initial request being denied. Two of the six that were approved were for the requestor's own business, four of which were for the spouse or domestic partner of the filer or requestor. One was due to the lack of response from the company altogether. The, the requestor had multiple times requested from the company with no response. One was approved for the candidacy F1 with a note that if elected, it might be viewed under a different lens when brought back. That person has not come back and did not win that election, so there wasn't another review of it. Confidentiality agreements were noted for three of the six requests. Four requestors attended the hearing and gave their own testimony or answered questions. And I'm available for questions if you have any about those orders that were sent to you and to Ms. Burns for review. If not, I can give her presentation. Do you have any questions for Tabitha? All right, go ahead, Tab. Okay. So Ms. Burns has joined us, but she'll go after. And this is a new modification request for Heidi Malia Burns Kielbasa. Just a quick recap, she's requesting a partial reporting modification that would exempt her from disclosing her spouse's business customers that paid $12,000 or more during the reporting period of July 2022 to July 2023 for her spouse's business interests as an owner of Jewel Growth Partners, Inc. The modification could be approved through the current term of office if the Commission chooses pursuant to WAC 39028090. The end of term currently would be July 31, 2026. And if you want any more details right into the record again, please let me know. Now, this is, I think, the third time we've visited this issue, so.
Fourth.
Fourth, yes, it's the fourth.
Who's counting?
Yeah. Okay, no, I don't think we need to do that, and everybody who's here who's been here for previous, yeah, previous time. Any questions for Tabitha? Ms. Burns, you've been sworn in three times before, so I'm going to assume that you're still under oath.
I'm happy, yes, I'm affirmative.
Okay. Anything, what would you like to tell us? Anything besides what?
Yeah, just gratitude to Tabitha and all of you for sharing those prior appeals. I think that there are a lot of similarities between the cases. I'd just like to summarize what I read there, if that's okay. I think the first one was a lack of access and involvement in the operations. Their applicant made arguments that they had no direct access to the sensitive information and are not involved in the day-to-day operations with those clients. That is the case with these customers at Jewel. We already noted that I, that I have publicly disclosed the client, the clients that I had. I think the second thing is a theme of commitment to recusing oneself if there were ever potential conflicts of interest, and I, I'm committing to that same commitment to recuse myself. Another thing that we saw, that I saw was a lack of government customers, or disclosure of government customers, and none of Jewel Growth's customers are government customers. And then the final theme was the, was a competitive disadvantage. And so I think there was similar themes there and arguments that disclosing those clients would, would create a competitive disadvantage for the consulting firm. So those are, those are the arguments that I saw that are in alignment with our, my situation. I'm happy to take any of the questions that you all have, or, yeah, talk further about it.
I really appreciate how persistent you have been and willing to come forward again and again and again. And to staff, thank you for that. It's true that we've had these kinds of cases before, and six previous cases all resulted in granting. Just tell you right now the way I'm leaning towards granting, but we'll see.
Any other questions?
I have one question. So you have no governmental customers.
That's correct, sir.
Because they're mostly nonprofits.
That's correct.
So are any of them quasi-governmental?
None of them are quasi-governmental.
Okay, thank you.
Augur J, any questions?
No, thank you.
Also, can we all go and do this hearing where you are?
We already tried that.
Pardon?
We already tried that. You're late on that question.
I move that we grant the requested modification.
Second.
Motion and a second to grant the. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Doug, so that's five to zero in favor. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, appreciate your time. Thank you for your patience and grace. We appreciate it.
Likewise. No, no, I really appreciate your service to our community, ensuring that there is integrity in our processes, so thank you.
I hope we don't see you soon. Thank you.
Likewise. Unless it's in another situation, maybe all on that each, there.
Thank you. One quick clarification. I'll go away just yet. One quick clarification, were we approving that through her term? Yes. Thank you.
Yeah.
Tabitha keeps us on point.
Well, and that avoids you having to see me very soon because my form is due on the 15th.
Okay, we have one more modification request. This is a modification request coming in from Jeanette Neese, and she is not joining today. So this request is for redaction of information connected to a contribution or contributions made to the Josh Amato campaign registered with the P D C, as well as the Sumamish Life PAC contribution, both being disclosed pursuant to the filing requirements described in R C W 4217A 235 and 240. Ms. Neese states that she has concerns for her information to be publicly available on the P D C website, making it available via Google search due to a safety concern. P D C staff discovered the contribution to Sumamish Life PAC upon review of the P D C records and informed the requestor of that additional report. Her initial request had come in for just the Josh Amato account. The Josh Amato and Sumamish Life PAC campaigns did, in writing, give permission to redact if granted. Ms. Neese's records would be exempt from public disclosure if the Commission finds in accord with R C W 4217A 120 and WAC 39028080, the disclosure of such information would present a personal risk to a reasonable person. And I am available for questions if you have any.
I do have one. I don't want to divulge anything that's confidential, but the reason given is something that I don't understand, the relationship between the concern that she has and redact the home address.
Yeah.
There's not any relationship between that concern and the home address.
Right. And I believe from discussions with her, the concern is that she has taken steps to remove her information as much as possible from online due to the situation. And when she does a general Google search, it comes up on the web as like, I think it's like the second or third line of her name results. And so that was her concern.
My question, she's, she's only asking to have her address redacted, not the fact that her name shows up as a contributor, is that correct?
That is correct. Just the, the home address.
I was about to make a comment then, and that is, you know, you get these domestic violence protection orders and other sorts of orders that supposedly protect you from people knowing where you live, and then these Google searches, it's like, Alan and I, with the judges, don't want people to know their home addresses, and we Google their names and their addresses pop up in a Google search. So I, I think this is a reasonable request.
Her name is, I know where she lives, very easy to find on the internet. I found it three times. So it's the, and I'm not trying to channel Bill.
Oh, and she's been hacked.
How was she hacked? Was her Facebook account hacked? She did not disclose how the hacking happened, but that it was more than just a hack. It was, her information was taken, stolen. Identity theft, yes. Okay, that's different. Yeah, hacking your Facebook account.
Yeah, although ordinarily, if you were able to completely eliminate from the world her home address, if there's a hacker out there that has the ability to break into her IP address, like getting rid of, I don't care if we get rid of the home address, but it does absolutely nothing to protect her from IP.
And so her information on the report would still show her name, it would show the city and the amount that she donated. It would just be the street address that would be redacted from public view.
Yeah, again, I don't care, we'll be, but we're supposed to be saying that you can do these things for safety reasons. I'm not finding the connection between her being less safe or more safe, whether the address is there or not there.
I had urged her to join today. She had a, an already existing appointment, so she couldn't join.
I would move that we approve the request to redact the address from the reports.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion in a second. The only thing I might suggest is online hacking, to me, is not really a sufficient description. I think the future, if folks choose not to attend these hearings, then we have to take it on face of the submissions. But in discussions with folks, you might let them know that sometimes that's not going to be enough to get them over the bar. I did warn her that it wasn't something that we normally hear and that it was advised that she join. She just had the conflicting schedule today, but she did want to join to address questions. She just couldn't move her. Maybe in the written submission, since these are submitted confidentially, always with the exception, if we don't grant, it becomes public, but a little more information for us, so. All right, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Five to zero the modification requests.
I have a question for John. Do we need a second motion to keep the records that were submitted confidential? I think you should just include it in that, if you want to amend the motion, that would be fine. You don't need a second motion.
All right, we, can we make the motion, Brad?
Yes.
Take that as a friendly amendment to.
I would.
Done, thank you. Is that it, Tabitha? Yes, thank you so much, Commissioner. We'll see you either by phone or someplace in April on Judge Loring, so. Probably by phone. All right, the last item on the agenda is, before we break for executive session, is our enforcement update, and today it's with Alice. Good morning.
Good morning, can you hear me?
Can.
All right, hopefully I'll get you out of here pretty quick. The enforcement report that I'm going to be giving today covered the time period that covered the special election, which is why you will notice there are quite a few open complaints that have been opened and are still open. Due to the timing, once we got a complaint, we did wait to see if the committee filed their end-of-election report, so that's why a number of those are still open. Do you have any questions for me, or anything you want me to cover specifically? This is my first, first time doing this, so I'm a rookie here.
Well, we get the written report, so we see what's been closed and the reasons. The open case list is luminous.
And I hear, I heard you, part of the discussion about the BAPs coming up. I can't guarantee those will be over or under four hours. I can only offer my promise that I will do my best on mine.
And now I find out it's two days, not one, so.
Yep. I think you'll be hearing from me on day two.
Okay. Any questions for Alice before we go into executive session? Thank you, Alice. We'll see you next month.
Yep, thank you.
Anything for the good of the word of.
What, one thing I wanted to inquire is, do you need to have me participate in the executive session?
Can if you'd like.
I understand that, but I'd like to be elsewhere, but I, but I.
You are. You know, Doug, I think I have a better argument for that.
I'm sure you got, you're, you're in a better elsewhere, but.
But, but I'm listening to all these people in a swimming pool making noises and watching the boats go by and trying to keep this glare off my screen.
Not to influence your decision, but there would be a quorum with or without you, Commissioner.
You don't take any action, executive session anyway, so, all right, we're adjourned. We'll be back at about 1:00 to conclude the meeting.
The meeting will be available for you to log into electronically.
Okay, thank you.
I'll be back at 1:00. All right, I go to the Commissioner, we are back. Good afternoon, everyone, it's 1:00. The executive session is over, and today's meeting is adjourned. Thank you.